I.
Carl, I.
Carl, I.
All right.
Do I, or I, so Carrie, back in public session, I think it's eight twenty-five, is that say?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Eight twenty-five.
I'd just like to add for the record that while we were in the advice of council meeting, the board discussed, the chief of police was asked to attend, the board discussed two matters in terms of a specific employee as well as a question to me regarding the legal impact of the next item on the agenda in terms of the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next item is J, Authorization Expansion of Monroe Police Department K-9 Unit and Acceptance of Grant Funds for the Purchase, Training, and Maintenance of a New Explosive Detection K-9. Trustee Berenger, you'd read that?
Sure. Whereas the Monroe Police Department has been awarded $60,000 in federal funding under the Explosive Detection K-9 Team Grant through the U.S. Department of Homeland Security's State Homeland Security Grant Program. And whereas the department has additionally been granted $7,500 through AKC Reunite Adopt a K-9 Cop Grant for the purchase of a new K-9. And whereas the grant program further provides an annual award of $15,000 to support the training, equipment, and maintenance needs of the K-9 program. And whereas the Monroe Police Department has successfully operated a K-9 unit since 2014, which has significantly contributed to the safety and security of the Village of Monroe and enhanced community relations and inter-agency cooperation. And whereas the department seeks to expand its K-9 program with the addition of a second K-9 unit specializing in explosive detection to address evolving public safety threats and protect high-risk locations, including places of worship, schools, government buildings, and shopping centers. And whereas Detective Jason Farningham has been selected as the new K-9 officer and will complete the necessary training alongside the new K-9 to ensure the effective deployment of the unit. And whereas the unit, the department is committed to proactive, community-focused law enforcement and recognizes the importance of this expansion in fulfilling that mission. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Monroe trustees hereby authorizes the Monroe Police Department to accept the grant funding as outlined, proceed with the purchase of a new explosive detection K-9 and associated equipment, and expand the K-9 program accordingly. Be it further resolved that the Monroe Police Department is authorized to take all necessary steps to implement this resolution and ensure timely submission before the August 34th, 2025 grant deadline. And I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Can I get a second, please?
Hold on a second.
I'd like some discussion, if I could, with the board.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing I heard before is the ability to detect firearms, I guess the gunpowder.
I would guess so, yeah.
Yeah. Firearms are around. You know, I don't know.
It would detect both.
Yeah, well, again firearms, you know, there's people always carrying illegal firearms.
Right.
And if the dog is around.
If they had a call stop like that, I think they would call him into service, or her.
Well, I just, I didn't know that before.
Good, well. Deb, do you have anything?
Um, no, I, I.
You're good.
Yep, I'm good.
John, do you have anything you want to talk about?
Well, you know, again, we've got to, we've got to start, you know, it's not, nothing to do with, we've got to start bolstering our ranks in the police department. I think we need to start focusing on adding police officers. I'm not against the dog, we do have one dog, but my opinion, I'm strong on it, we really need, our cops are running here, and we need to increase our manpower in this village.
I think that's something we can do, but this is just a different grant.
Just a.
Yep. Trustee O'Connor?
Yes, like I said, the occurrences or lack of, with a demand that we do move forward this, spend money on it, that's my only question.
Right, right, right.
And we got forbid if the same one situation that happened in the next year.
It'd be worth it.
It'd be worth it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I think the other thing that's important for the public to understand and for those watching, it's a very broad amount of training that this, this animal receives, this dog receives, and the trainer. And things are changing in society, and, and there are things where, you know, I won't say the word opportunity, it's, it's not a good opportunity to find a firearm or something like that in someone's possession, but to have this tool in the tool bag further enhances the safety of this village, which I think is really important to the village residents and the public at large. So I think that's an important piece. And to trustee Carl's point, I think that is something that we need to look at as well, and I think that can be done. The one benefit of this is the financial impact, it's not like we're bringing a personnel into the village. Personnel is here, he's going back to patrol, and somebody that's in currently in patrol possibly will now become a detective to replace that person because the handler that they're recommending is currently detective in the Village of Monroe Police Department. Having said all that, I believe that, and I agree with trustee Carl, there should be opportunity to, to do this, and I've had some brief discussion with the chief, because we do believe bringing and enhancing our department's important. You know, calls to service just keep going up, and that's a very big picture, so I think we need to do that. So this doesn't create an impact, a new officer will, but the value is there as a new officer as well. So I think that's something that we should be considering, budget time to consider doing, and I think at this point, though, we need to make a decision on this K-9 itself. So we have a first and second. I'd like to call the question.
Berenger, I.
Carl, I.
Carl, no.
O'Connor, I.
And do I, so Carrie, okay. So the next order of business from that, and I thank everybody's comments and thoughts on this, it's important business, I appreciate the time. Next order of business is the authorization for DPW purchase of a 2026 Mack GR42FR. Yeah, I'll move to this piece right here. Got it. Okay, so on the recommendation of DPW supervisor Aldo Chiapetta, he's recommending that we purchase a 2026 Mack GR42FR. The cost with all the equipment, body, and chassis, and all the pieces that they want, is $329,257.68. The board has discussed the opportunity, there was a purchase outright, but there's a lease program, and the five-year term is the most attractive for us in terms of annual cost, based upon monies that we do set aside each year and for what we have in the reserve to support it. That annual lease payment is $77,461.16, and that is what I put out there as a recommendation to the board.
Neil, I got this one here is, is different, the numbers are different. I got three twenty-seven, four forty-eight.
Yeah, if you had looked on there, there was writing on there that said that was an example of the lease, but then I gave you guys the real lease just now.
And is it a twenty-five or a twenty-six? We have both numbers.
No, it's a twenty-six.
It's a twenty-six.
I think it's the funding date.
Twenty-twenty-five.
Oh, you're on the F-250.
Yeah.
Oh, this is, this is the, this is the upgraded one.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's, it's.
Three twenty-seven.
Three twenty-seven.
All right, so let me just amend that.
Yeah.
So the purchase price would be three twenty-seven, four four eight oh seven, with a financing lease payment of seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-one cents. I'd like to amend that, Kim?
Yep, perfect.
Okay, and I'd like to put that, or have somebody put that in form of motion, please?
Are you, are you looking at the seven-year option?
No, we said the five, I think we said.
The five-year option, seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six fifty-one.
And we can accelerate that too, by the way, should we have the ability to do so, it's always in our benefit.
O'Connor, put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, second, please?
Carl will second.
Okay, further discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, I.
Carl, I.
Carl, I.
Do I, or I, so Carrie, thank you.
Now the other one.
Now the other one, okay. DPW purchase of a F-250, 2025 F-250 from Romeo Ford of Kingston LLC, upon the recommendation of supervisor Aldo Chiapetta. He's asking for this truck for his maintenance and automobile repair shop mechanic, Steven Mihak. This vehicle is being purchased through a sourceable contract with this vendor, and this is a number that came in at, I didn't see that.
An OGS number, right?
It is an OGS number, yes.
PC seven zero four one nine.
Let me just get to it, just stand by one second. It's ready here, got it, okay. Okay, forty-eight, okay. I don't see the OGS number on my documents.
Right here.
Oh, got it.
Right there.
I can't find my packet, this appears somewhere in the shuffle here. Thank you. Okay.
I have it. That's the two fifty.
Yeah.
Go one page back.
Okay. Okay, resolve the board of trustees, authorize the Village of Monroe Department of Public Works to purchase their 2025 F-250 from Romeo Ford of Kingston, New York, off the state bid, New York State OGS number, contract number is PC seven zero four one nine, in the amount of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents to be allocated from budget line A, fifty-one ten point two four zero zero, street maintenance, highway equipment. I need a motion to accept this authorization?
Carl, make the motion.
Carl will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, I.
Carl, I.
Carl, all right.
Do I, or I, so Carrie, thank you. Have we got this right here, right? M?
Yeah, just the last one.
Yeah. So, let me, let me just read that. Okay, last item, I think, is the policy for the conduct of public meetings and all communication with the village board. Whereas the village board welcomes all public comments and takes each and every relevant comment for the residents of the village seriously, and whereas the village board welcomes public comments from constituents and others in an open and public forum, and whereas in order to facilitate orderly and productive meetings whereby the essential business of the village is timely conducted in an efficient manner, and whereas public meetings during which members of the public are provided an adequate but not excessive amount of time to speak on a particular agenda item or public use in a civic, public issue in a civil manner enhances the conduct of the Village of Monroe. I want to just make that a plain statement as opposed to reading the rest of this, if you don't mind?
Right.
Yeah, okay, so what we're asking for here is, we want the public to be engaged with the board of trustees. We want the public to have an opportunity to come up here and speak about the business of the Village of Monroe. We want it to be clear, succinct, positive, thoughtful, and attentive to what is happening and the reason you're coming up to speak. What we don't want is where somebody comes up and speaks about something, and then speaks about it again, and then speaks about it again. What that does, it breaks down the actual thought of what they actually came here for. So I can't speak specifically about what that is, but I just want that to be respected. I'm, this board is committed to the open dialogue from the public. I'm not a big fan of putting time limits on people because I feel like you have a thought, you want to express the thought, you have the opportunity to speak that thought. That's the way we conduct business here, and it's worked, as long as I've been mayor here for almost eight years, it's worked very well. So I want to see that continue. If I find that the, the conversation starts to devolve into.
Repetitive.
Repetitiveness, or, or, or less than conducive matter, I'm going to ask that we stop it. So I hope that's received in the spirit it's, it's being given, and I'd like to ask the board if they're in agreement with that statement.
Yes.
For us?
Yes.
Yeah, as long as we have the capability to recognize what is being abused and.
Right.
Take measures, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Okay, very good. Okay, so that was really the last item on our agenda for this evening. I hope to keep it that way in that term. I don't have, I don't think I have anything. Do I have anything, Kim, to speak about?
No, I think you're good.
Okay. Trustee Berenger? I'm sorry? Yeah.
No? Okay.
Okay, I have, I just wanted to say that the, the Village Police has been awarded a $50,000 funding for a cybersecurity grant program, so I just wanted to share that with everyone. And also, the police department received a letter from Executive Steve Newhouse, and he was basically praising our use of the NISH program, how well it's been working, and he was just thanking us for that, praising us.
I just wanted to inform everyone that the, our email addresses and our website has always been thevillageofmonroe.org. We now also have villageofmonroe.ny.gov. Both will be working, both will stay, and one will simply forward to the other, but there's more security knowing that it's a .gov as opposed to just an organization.
And are we going to notify, are we going to do something on the website?
We, we.
Email? No, we did, okay, good, thank you, appreciate that. Trustee Carl?
Yeah, just a few things. I see crews out removing double poles in the village.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, there's an awful lot of them, how long do they plan on being here?
I couldn't say, I, I, it was like going to the dentist just to get them to take on the first initial look. I think we, we kind of held hostage some funds, council, if I remember correctly, yeah. So, and holding those funds and using that as a tool, we got somebody's attention, and I guess they're starting to do it more effectively now, so I'm hoping that that continues. I don't have a timeline specifically, but.
Okay. Also, up at the reservoir, within a thousand feet of the intakes, the other day I was up there, there's property owners right along by the gatehouse that are running kayaks right over top of the water intake. There's fishermen, there's supposed to be none of that going on within a thousand feet of that water intake. That's part of the 1977 Department of, State Department of Health laws that were, were put into place. So we really need to get that posted, that it's a restricted area, to keep the people from leaving their property and coming across the, coming across the lake, because that is, you know, they're basically violating the law.
Sure.
So e-bikes and scooters, we continue to talk about it. My wife almost got run over the other day when we came out of Somnies on somebody coming up the sidewalk on a, on an e-scooter. You're, you're on the ponds, running around on the paths on the ponds, and somebody's going to get hurt. You need to sign, put the signage up and enforce it because some, somebody's going to get hurt. There's a lot of people that walk those ponds, that walk in the middle of town, and you come out of a storefront and all of a sudden there's somebody just about running over your feet.
Are they supposed to just be on the road, or what are these? Not on the sidewalk?
Very, very dangerous, very dangerous. Also, I don't know if you noticed, the intersections, the, these stand-up signs that are put up, they're stapled on telephone poles, it's just, our, our intersections along village streets and state highways are getting cluttered with signs for everything, from the Orange County Fair right up to a film festival that was two weeks ago, nobody picks their stuff up. Case in point, you go over here by Dollar General, look at that intersection, it's, it just degrades the community. I don't know what, you know, you put the stuff up, they have a garage sale, take, take your signs back down. The compost facility, we've got the highway exemption last year, and told, we were told we're no longer allowed to use, or dump.
That's correct.
Dump our compost, our leaves at the, at the town landfill, but yet in November 2nd of 1970, all parcels within the town of Monroe, including its villages, paid for that property. We paid for that property as village taxpayers. So I think a discussion needs to be had with the town regarding why we are no longer allowed to dump there when we per, helped purchase that property.
For that purpose.
For that purpose.
Right.
I'm almost done. IMA with the, with the town, have we heard, other than, I saw an email today that went out.
Yeah.
Because I haven't heard anything all summer regarding if they're even interested.
Sure, well, no, they are interested. The, the IMA that was drafted and sent to us, the village responded to, I think a very well-crafted document, and it addressed all the points that the IMA would also address if we were to be successful and, and do this project with the town. The problem was, or is, and remains, that when we replied to the IMA draft, the comments returned to the village board, for instance, we believe, and I think we also believe, that a independent study by people that do this for a living should analyze what the impact of something like this is. We have some information regarding some studies that the, our police department had done, independent of any, any ulterior motives for any future engagement, was for every thousand residents you have, you need 1.2 police officers. So I'm assuming for a second that there's 10,000 residents in the town of Monroe, give or take, and that would equate 12 police officers. That's just bodies. Those police officers go out and do work. When they do that work and they find there's a, been a crime committed, and there's a detective referred to that, where is that detective that can do that investigative work? When you have 12 people out there, there's a chain of command, and it's very strict in the police departments, and for good reason. So you have your chief, and you have your lieutenant, and your sergeants, and patrol, and things like that. Well, everybody has a job to do and different duties, and you have supervision involved, so that requires supervision. How much of that supervision is needed? And then you have equipment, you have vehicles, you have tools within the police department buildings, obviously you have contractual obligations to the unit by their collective bargaining agreement.
And the building itself.
And the building itself. So there's a lot of different elements, and I don't have the skill set, as much as I wrote a very good response, I still think it requires more information, better details, and financial implications for us to say to the town of Monroe, hey, here's what we'd like to do. And I was given an answer back that they would not consider doing that.
So does that mean their, what's that mean?
I don't know, well, now, subsequent to that, I spoke into the supervisor through an email, and I sent it all to you folks, and basically he'd like to have a sit-down and discussion with it, about it. So he's put out a couple of dates, today being the first one, and then tomorrow, and then Thursday being the second and third dates possible. My, my sense of it is this, if I have somebody that is incentivized to want to be part of something like this, I would think the conversation on the response to the IMA would be very different. Does that make sense? Is that what I'm saying?
Great.
And I didn't sense that. I'm not saying that they're not interested, I'm not saying that he's not engaged, what I'm saying is that I find that the very first thing I would do is I would engage with a firm and find out what is it, what's the impact to it? We don't know what it is. One of the other things, and, and these are all things that probably could be discussed, so to, to supervisor's point, I'd be willing to do that, but I don't want to go back into something as the mayor representing the village taxpayer and the village residents and the safety of this village, and say, yeah, I'm ready to move forward, when I don't know what that impact is. I really don't, and I don't feel like I have the bandwidth or the ability to, to say that, other than what I have statistically, which says for every thousand residents you need 1.2 police officers, which if it is 10,000 residents, then that's 12 police officers.
I, I just know that our police force is really very good, and the response time from our police force is excellent, and if we expanded into the town, it would have to all stay the same, and that, that's a big lift, and I think we need to have a really good study done, to keep us the same.
So.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Until the email I got this afternoon, I, I already written my notes.
Well, I have nothing, it was nothing substantive, I guess, to share with the board up until the request, where there was nothing, I, I had not responded to his request for a meeting, or he hadn't heard anything since July 7th, so August 7th he replied, I said I was away, and that I would, you know, follow up, so, at least I think that's what I did.
All right. Guess the last thing I'll do is fireworks for 2026. I'm thinking ahead, ahead here, that's the 250th birthday of the United States of America. What I'd like to try to do, I've been in touch with somebody up in Chester, is possibly to put a drone show in with the fireworks next year. So something to kick around and budget time.
Those things are fantastic.
Budget time, you know, put the, put the monies in accordingly and see if the, you know, the town of Monroe, the Village of Harriman are willing to continue to be partners.
And could we possibly look at sponsors? Because I noticed Chester's was all funded, as far as I understand, through suburban propane.
They've done that for years up there.
I'd like to know what the cost of that was. I just happened to read it on something, I don't know.
They only, they only did the fireworks, they don't do the drone, they, they sponsor the fireworks up there, but their show isn't.
A lot of the cost.
Their show isn't as big as ours.
Yeah.
But that's just something, just keep in the back of your minds as we get closer. And that, that's all I got, thank you for your time.
Yep. Trustee O'Connor?
I'm good.
Okay. Counsel?
No.
Okay, any from the, from the public which to speak on any matters concerning village business?
Your name?
May the Lord. We spoke last, last time, the last public meeting, if it will be, I mean, I got an email as well from.
Yep.
From Rosie Ferrera, that my issue with the partner will be on the gen, gen, gen IMA. My question is, was anything due, due towards, was, was it discussed?
So as a follow-up, we went back and had counsel look at the law, and there is no exemption, it was initially, when we first discussed here at a roundtable meeting, there was, it thought that maybe there was some room or exemption, it was possible. When we reread the law, there wasn't any, so as it stands right now, it's a complete prohibition of parking your bus in a residential neighborhood like yours.
So I understand last time that we'll discuss again on my own driveway, what's the reason for, forbid that?
What is the reason?
What is the reason to, to, to permit on my, on my own driveway when we all have backup cameras and somebody guides us, and we all do, do it in the safe way? Is there any reason for that?
It's safety concerns, it's as simple as that.
So why, why is it different from all, from a reg, regular car that there's also backing in?
Well, I, I don't think you can equate a, a car with a full-size school bus, in size, height, width, presence, I mean, it's, it's, it's not as easily.
Um, there was a, on 7/29, when I filed a claim by, by the village clerk, that was school bus from other company parked by the Monroe Theater, and one bus was parked by the lake as well, and here is a copy of it. Was an, anything do, was anything done for, for, for that? Is, is in the village and it's in the residential area.
So let me just, can I answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the buses that were parked for people to go to the movie theater, I suppose, or whatever, they're parked in the CB district, they're not in a residential district.
How come, and one day, it was a school bus of our company, he was standing inside in the bus, and he was ticketed by Officer Pino, standing by the lake, which the same bus was saying then.
I'm not familiar with that, you'd have to either give the clerk a copy, we could investigate that. What you're saying is there was a school bus on Mill Pond Parkway, and Officer Pino ticketed the driver.
Yeah.
I don't know, I can't answer that, I have no knowledge of that.
How, how can, can, can he do that if, if it's not, not against the law?
I don't know. To, to answer your question, I don't know, I'd have to investigate that.
So.
I just want to know, where was that bus?
On Lakes to here, in some.
Exactly where, you said Mill Pond Parkway.
Seven, seven and, and Mill, Mill, Mill Pond Parkway.
I don't know. Do you have a copy of that report or something? Sure. Did you just give it to the clerk, or?
Yeah, okay. Well, cause there was a bus parked at front of, um, Airplane Park, and blocking the southbound lane of Mill Pond Parkway. I do know that bus was there, and, uh, and it wasn't ticketed. So, curious.
This was in May.
It should have been ticketed, but it wasn't.
This was in May. May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
All right, we'll, we'll look into that.
Yeah.
And I will have.
There is a couple of ma, ma, many things that, that, that you guys saying, um, we're looking into it, but unfort, fortunately, nev, never came back to us.
Well, I'll tell you what we do, are we looking at those items right there in front of you? Are we going to be looking at what you have there? Are you wanting us to opine, or to give you an answer on what you've got in front of you?
What?
You said there've been many issues.
Mr. Mayor, can I just interject that if, if these are questions that should be addressed to the police?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'd like to just take a copy and just give it to the police.
Yeah, and let the police respond. The village board does not enforce.
Right.
Traffic law.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to give those to the?
Oh, I have.
I would also note for the record that there have been many complaints, as I understand it, about buses and other commercial, uh, vehicles being parked in residential districts. And that was one of the reasons why this Ford enacted this neutral law that applies to everyone equally.
Right. I'm sorry, please.
Hi. I'm Laura Paul. Um, I grew up in Monroe, Harriman. Um, I've been here for over thirty years, and my family. Um, I'm founder of All American Blazers, I emailed you guys, uh, earlier. She said she would share it with you. Um, I wanted to share my initiative for a community center, um, repurposing the Monroe Temple on three fourteen North Main Street, um, as a youth, as a safe space for, uh, for our youth. Um, I, I just know, growing up here, I was national champion. I won a hundred meter hurdles in, for nationals in two thousand and one, and held New York State record for five years. Uh, but when I went to college, I was, thank you, I was underdeveloped, and socially just underdeveloped. I was a great athlete, but I didn't have the social skills in recognizing danger. Um, and now, uh, when I, when I went to school, I was attacked. I was stabbed and, and railroaded my.
Oh, gosh.
My career to the Olympics. And, um, you know, it was, it was something that I dealt with. But now, as an adult, and I'm raising my kids here, um, I really want to create a space that is kind of catering to our kids, that are niching out a space for our kids, that teaches them social development, mental health, where, you know, seven, eight, nine, ten-year-olds, instead of going to a therapist every Tuesday, they're coming to an after-school program for two hours, where we have mental health specialists who are, uh, equipped, and, and preventing a lot of drugs, suicide, things like that, in our youth. So I just wanted to share my initiative with you all, and my story. Um, we, we do, we're, we're hoping to acquire grants, funding to acquire the building. Um, so the cost would be little to nothing for, you know, we are, that, the, the temple over there is walking distance from North Main School.
Sure.
Um, and we just want to make sure that you guys are knowing what our plan is, and our initiative, and our vision.
How could we help?
Um, endorsements backing us up, saying that our community needs this. There's a few grants that, um, the urban, uh, communities are, have access and the resources to because of the population. But with our Monroe population being as small, there are certain grants that would require village, town to be backing us in our initiative.
Sure, okay. So you gave the clerk some of your information and the initiative itself?
I sent you guys an email, but my, um, the grant developer will be emailing a letter to you guys to whether.
Put it onto the letterhead, please.
With the letter, yes.
Is that, that property's for sale now?
Yes, it is.
Are you in contract on it, or?
Um, they, I, I sat and spoke with the board for the temple. They are in agreeance with us, but they just, as you guys know, or if you guys don't know, grant funding could take time. Um, so they just want to make sure that, you know, once, when they kind of lock in with us, that everything is kind of going towards our movement, instead of kind of, you know, whether it's zoning, or building, or however, however it goes, they just want to make sure that I'm doing all across my t's and dot my i's, and, you know, it's worth the wait. You know, they, they agreed with me, but it's still a purchase.
Fluid, yeah, got it.
We should probably make sure of that. I'll check with the building department to make sure that there wouldn't be any issues, um, with, with what you're going to do. You're not opening a restaurant, you're not doing anything like that. It's a community center, uh, the temple was where, where people gathered. So there's a, there's a certain situation where I don't think it's debt, but you have, we have to check with the planning board just to make sure that there's nothing out of place for that. And you have parking.
Yeah, I mean, we're nonprofit as well.
So the, uh, the All American Blazers, is the organization five oh one C three?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, great. If it's possible, we could set up another date to sit down and talk about it further?
Absolutely, you guys could give me a date now, and I could just put it in my calendar, and I'll be, I'll be happy to.
I don't know my count, I tell you what.
Check with the planning board, well, at least with the building department first. See if there's any restrictions whatsoever.
And if there is, if there is, we also, uh, like I said, my family, uh, there, there's ten of us. I'm the seventh born of the ten, um, are all pastors and ministers. So there is also, my family also has a five oh one religious entity that they are on standby if it needed to be religious to religion, um, instead of five oh one to five oh one. So that's also a possibility.
Okay. And this is your email at the top of the page here, so, at hotmail.com, at you.
Yeah, that's me, and also AA Blazers, I put a second email at the bottom with my signature.
This is also, where you, do you have relatives that went to Sacred Heart?
Yes.
They were the basketball champions, or?
Yes, sir.
I remember, I remember that.
Yes, and my brother won the Voice as well.
Jermaine, right, Jermaine?
Voice, Jermaine.
Yeah, you guys, as I'm like.
We know, yeah.
Well, we know you. My, my wife was a high school nurse for most of yous who were going through.
That's why I said, everyone should know us, and we're.
I voted for him.
We're coming back to give back to our community. Jermaine promised three days out of the month to come and, and have whatever it's vocal lessons, or just talk with the kids choir. Same with Wendy, she's pastoring, and, you know, she's doing art therapy. So we have a lot of big plans for our youth that's going to.
That's exciting.
And it's very important, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else in the public wish to speak, come on up, give the clerk your name and.
Yes, I will, I will talk to him for sure, thank you, no problem, thank you, nice meeting you.
In case you don't know me, my name's Councilwoman Maureen Richardson. Um, I appreciate the discussion about the village PD tonight. I came specifically down to discuss what's been going on from a town perspective, and I'm mostly here representing constituents who have been reaching out to me for quite a number of years, even before I was elected to the town board. This was a priority coming in that, um, for those of the public who do not realize that the village police is obviously, um, you know, owned and operated, and taxpayer-funded by the village residents. And the town of Monroe Police, we rely on the state police. Uh, many do not realize that. And when you do realize that, you have to realize that the town's police force is not our own. It is, again, completely state PD, they have their own policies. It has its advantages from a cost perspective, but the village police, um, as I've witnessed here tonight, it's a huge effort, something that taxpayers have funded for many years. It's many grants, congratulations on that. Um, a lot of diligence, hard work, um, an existing hierarchical structure, a lot of policy, a lot of staffing decisions, um, that have gone into custom policing and safety for this village, that do not extend beyond this village to the unincorporated parts of the town. And while state PD, we are grateful for everything that they do to keep us safe, um, those policy decisions are not under the control of the town government. Um, we can sort of cooperate and direct where troopers sit to ticket and get traffic, um, under control, and speeding under control. But there's so much going on in the town that we don't have control over, because state PD has been reallocated to completely different barracks in other towns. Their focus from a state level is highway patrol, um, drug enforcement, everything like that's going on in a more serious, um, fashion, and that requires completely different education, completely different specialties and skills. Um, so, when I came in from the town board, I was very interested in pursuing a village IMA, whether that was a total coverage that the village would expand, as previously mentioned. Um, and I completely agree with the board's assessment here that it would need to be independently studied. I don't think that anyone can say, however many decades that the village police has been operating, specifically in the village, that we can just overnight incorporate any kind of policies that would fit the town of Monroe, which is a completely, it's double the size of the territory. It is literally double the population coverage as well. So it would be impractical and infeasible to say overnight, let's have an agreement, shake hands, and everything will change. Um, so I did think it would be a good idea, not only to approach the village, and say, is this something, you've had this police force, which, you know, now you have K nine grants, and federal money coming in, and programs that you're initiating, and staffing decisions that you're making, and a trustee who's concerned that you don't actually even have enough manpower covering your own village. Would this be something that the village is even interested in partaking in? Because it is such a unique, honed, hard-working force catering to the village. So it is a favor, a lift, an ask from the town government, from the town's constituents, to the village, to say, you have something, you have a resource, would you share it? And that has always been my goal, is bringing minds to the table. We recently had a visitor come to a town board meeting, claiming that they were a specialized consultant, that they had experience in policing, that they had, um, studied different police forces in different municipalities, and that they were going, that money had been set aside, and that we were actively retaining this individual to study, um, this issue for the town, which has been largely debated. I mean, policing is a very personal and political issue. You can't ignore that. Some people say, yes, they keep us safe, and other people have deep reservations about whether they can trust the police. And I think the village police do an amazing job at having open houses, and warming themselves to the public, and showing who they are and what they're about, and that's important. But when this individual came to the town, I said, this is a very deeply personal issue. This is something that the public wants to be involved in. This is not an easy solution, this is not an overnight solution. We do need all of our public officials, and our public's trust in the decisions that we're making, and we should hold an open house. This individual agreed with me that we should have an open forum, where I believe that the village and the town should have a, almost like the comprehensive plan meeting that the village has put on, um, that we basically poll residents. We take their pulse, what kind of policing needs, what are their priorities, what are their fears, their reservations? And we address that with a proper, independent research consultant who we seek out, who's not affiliated, unbiased, who can guide both the town and the village, if they're interested, through this process. When I brought this up, again, I was encouraged, this is something that the town would do, and that it was a great idea. But I was also told by the same individual that he felt that the town needed its own town police force. So it was a big surprise for me, uh, months later, and this was many months later, to receive secondhand, as a councilperson, a fully drafted proposal from the town of Monroe, sent to the village, without the knowledge of myself and another councilperson in the board, without our input, when, of course, that also means the public had zero input in it. And I know that the village had zero input in it either. And, um, reading your thoughtful response, which was a joint effort, as I understand, that a meeting was sort of held, and on the village's end, in response to what was proposed, and the concerns of each and every one of the trustees was, um, sort of synchronized and synthesized back to us. I did appreciate that, and I did respond, um, after I saw the sort of just surprising responses. They weren't thoughtful responses from the town, and I didn't want to be associated with them, because I do, as I hear you, saying that the responses didn't indicate interest. They didn't indicate a partnership, and they didn't indicate that it would be a service that the village would be extending to the public for the greater good of that public, at potentially detriment, and loss, or change, or cost to the village. And so I wanted to come here to specifically address that, and say that that is what I'm here to represent, the public who do rely on our police, and who are waiting a half an hour for state PD, you know, bless them all that they do, they cannot get there fast enough. We need to do something. There are cars speeding up eighty miles an hour down, you know, thirty mile per hour roads. There are no police manning the back roads, there are accidents, there are medical emergencies that even our EMS can't get to in time, that if a local PD, they could make the difference, is all I'm saying. There's so many situations where PD getting there even fifteen minutes earlier could make the difference. So that is what I'm here to represent, not my self-interest, not a political interest. And I believe fully that we need independent analysis. And I don't understand where we're at, um, with this IMA, because I just don't agree with it. I, I hope that my comments were made clear that I would like to respect the existing staffing and structure of the village, whether we could come together and say, the closest portion, that would make sense, and just expanding coverage, what you could, while keeping it much the same. Adding a couple officers, maybe a car, how much would that get us? But analyzing even an extension of coverage to some of our residents, and then asking Harriman to do the same thing, asking Chester to do the same thing. Whether we have to create a map of jurisdiction, something like that. Studying that impact to what has been previously mentioned of doubling the size of the PD. I mean, we don't even know if the existing building would fit all the new officers, and all of the new offices and, um, equipment that is basically, you're effectively doubling the entire police force. So would you even be able to have the same building? At that point, does it make sense?
Yeah.
And does that, is that a question I can answer? Absolutely not. And I believe that together, we should attempt to retain someone who can answer that for the public, because we deserve those answers. We deserve to know what makes sense for the town of Monroe, because the town of Monroe and the village of Monroe deserve public trust and safety, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the public wish to speak?
I want to, I want to bring anything up, cause I don't know the appropriate word. So I'm just, I'm just speaking, because things are going on in here, but.
Did you just give the clerk your name?
Oh, that's one of them.
What is it?
That's one of them. T D U A R D L?
Mm-hmm.
B L A N C L?
B L A N C L?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But, um, Karen, if you had the tone, it kind of inspired me with an idea, especially what she said. The police force here are amazing, very amazing, especially the rapport with the community, even with language barriers, amazing. And the fact that they allow people who are having problems and need policing help, come to me to communicate for them, and then I'll translate, is amazing, because a lot of people are stuck in their way. come to me to communicate for them, and then I'll translate, is amazing, because a lot of people are stuck in their ways, they don't allow it in other towns, and I've seen it firsthand. I mean, I did security for a good portion of my time, doing nightclubs around New York. The best reports I've had was in Newburgh. And now owning a business here, the press report I can say I've had is, is with you guys, Village of Monroe, they're great. But there is a big problem happening in this community. I know people are having different opinions on immigration, and what's going on, and whatnot, and yes, it is illegal, technical, it's technically illegal to cross a border here, but sometimes people don't have that time, or, or that luxury to, to try to go through the process, because sometimes it's a lot more dangerous than one thinks of, so people come here. But a lot of people that are here are respectful towards the community. And not even disrespect, respectful, but they fear of creating waves, that they try not to bother other people. And yes, there's a couple bad acts, and that happens everywhere. Any community, any race, any type of organization, there's always gonna be great, but there's always gonna be a couple bad acts that come with the batch. But I don't think that should allow certain agencies to come in, and from what I've seen, terrorize the herd. And I've had firsthand, I don't know if you guys probably heard about a video interaction I had with them over here, I got in the face, and I don't even think they're real agents, because I, I don't see a badge on this guy. I've been looking up amendments for the past couple weeks, they're supposed to identify themselves. On a Sunday, too, they came out here in vehicles that weren't a government agent vehicles, as you can tell, that, that's, that's a regular plate, I'm passing around a second, that's the group of them, I'll pass it, you guys can see. That's scary, because I have, last year, and you can ask over there, um, what's the word, translated, for a couple members that were robbed by some random, I don't wanna make this wrong, like, American press came out to them, dressed out like if they were some kind of like detective or something, with a all-blackout vehicle, I need to see your ID. You fit the description of blah, 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 I need to see, take the money out, toss the wall, and be like, I don't wanna see you again, and drive off. They have reported, they've caught like one or two guys, because they did that to a couple victims in front of buildings that had cameras. And the fact that these agencies say they can come into our towns without letting us know, I think it's complete BS, honestly. I think they at least need to notify you guys, so at least you guys know exactly where they're gonna be. So, when there's things like that, and we know that's not them, we can call them out for what they are. Racist terrorist, domestic terrorist, because that's what it is, honestly. What do you do when you terrorize the herd? You're, you're being a terrorist. In your own hometown, you're being a domestic terrorist. And, and that's what they're doing, they're going around with guns, and I've asked them multiple times, because I've checked my laws, I've had my run-in with the law in the past, not too proud of, but I've grown up from that, and, and matured. But I've learned as well that when someone like that is doing an operation, they gotta have some paperwork. An arrest warrant, a search warrant, they had neither. They went into that building, that door on twelve, that's the door to go up to apartment building, so at that point, it's private property. They went up there, they denied me, if you guys see the video, if not, I mean, I got it on my phone, I can show you guys. They denied me entrance, telling me it's private property, and I told them in video, yeah, I know, I know the owner, I'm allowed in there, you're not. If you're gonna go in there, no paperwork, at least show me three forms of ID, because as an agency, as a police officer, as anything, as a policing state in this country, they are public servants. By law, they have to show three forms of identification, if asked by the community, to make sure that...
Are they authentic, you think?
Huh?
Are they authentic?
Could be, because I've seen news reports, like you got, I'm saying, a lot of things, you guys seen the news? Other communities don't see the same thing, because if you go to Spanish channels, you'll see something about, oh, it looks like a little raid here and there. But you go to the Spanish channel, and they'll show behind that raid, a couple women were, were pushed out the way, kids were treated like crap, people dragged, people deported that weren't even illegally here, and had to get sent back, because they were within the herd that they were terrorizing. So, it's, it could be them as well, but then again, it could be illegal, because there's also things we've seen on the news that you have people like bounty hunters, who I think are cowards, honestly. You see a bounty of a murderer or rapist, and you can't go after that, but you go after someone who's had a thirteen-hour day of work, because they're here illegally, it's easy money for you, I, bounty hunters are cowards in my books. And also, I've heard racist radical groups, like poor boys down in the South, have been doing it. Go grab these little fake vests that they have, and put on a little acronym that they, whatever agency they wanna choose of, and go around terrorizing the herd, pick up people, and hey, which, uh, which station out here is gonna pay for the most immigrants? I, I got a handful, like, I think that's, that's not fair, especially in this community where a lot of people, yes, are scared, but a lot of people love this community, too. I, I have tons of people that come to my store, I mean, I'm not the biggest store rich guy, but I have tons of local media come to my store, because they trust me. Not only do I fix phones, and help them send money back to their family, and I, I take time out of my own personal life, after, before, even during the day, I'll tell my wife to watch the store, and I'll help translate for people, because if that little, little barrier wasn't there, oh my God, you guys wouldn't even know the beautiful relationships that would be going on out here. I'm telling you, it's amazing, the way people look up to Spanish people out here, working so hard, and doing so much, and the way they look up to the community here, how you guys walk around town, enjoying yourselves with family, they love you. And I see you guys love their hard work, it's, it's, that little barrier is, I think, is what's killing it. And, and I think, before I go completely off track, I think what you guys mentioned with the police, I think that gives me a great idea, so if you guys can actually get, like, funding, like, grants, what time? How about we push for the federal government to give grants to help out with growing you guys, to help out to police whatever agencies wanna come into this town, to have to show that they gotta have someone supervise them. Because I think that would be one of the best ways where we can get away from the whole brutality and mistreatment of stuff, and what better way to show that you guys are a town held in high regards, and your police is held in high regards, and now they have to be babysit by, by actual officers of, of the law who are upholding it, and, and treating citizens the way they are, or even non-citizens, treating humans as humans are. And, and I think that would be a great idea to help, I don't know, maybe we can put our brains together, put something together. Like I, like I said, I don't mind putting in the time, if you would see me, I've had times where I've stayed there two, three hours, passed my time there just to help translate something, or I would translate something during the day, and I have to stay there until one in the morning fixing phones, because I wanna help someone out. I always promised my mother, I have a gift that can help someone out, do it, do it for free, and that's what I try to do.
Appreciate it, thank you.
But, as you can see those pictures, you guys can keep those, I have many copies.
Right there, take them.
Oh, no, you, I mean, you guys can keep them just in case, you gotta have them, because I, I'm making bigger copies, and I'm actually gonna go to the FBI building in Goshaun. I'm just waiting to hear on the landlord if he wants to be a part of it or not, and I'm gonna confront him, but like...
Okay.
You guys are worried about big things, but that right there is actually a federal law, a federal offense. They're, they're impersonating officers, but they're not real officers.
Alright.
And, and...
Show that to the police.
God, God, yeah, I mean, if you wanted to, and God only knows if they're, God forbid, they're rapists, they're murderers, or not. You never know, things nowadays.
Thank you, Eddie, appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Okay, no further comment from the public, I ask council, if we could just, two minutes, go for advise the council, and to executive?
Uh, okay.
Real quick, I need a motion to go into executive for attorney-client, for the purposes...
Come back out again?
I don't think so, no, we're done.
Oh, so then let's close the meeting.
Yeah. Well, no, you can't do that, you can't.
You can't.
Go into executive session, and then I'll come back out.
Okay.
Berenger, make the motion that we go into executive session.
Second?
Carl's second.
Who's the question?
Berenger, I.
Berenger, I.
Carl, I.
Carl, I.
Well, I'm right.
Why, eyes are carried. Okay, so we're up.
No, I have to shut it.